Admiral James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novitt.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon absent. Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Tack.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bertie. Our first item on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Do you show me the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, the children of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is reports of city officers and of course, the comments by mayors. I do have a proclamation for Matt Grevers' day, which is today. We had a really nice reception here at six o'clock over at the high school commons area. A great number of the community came out to welcome Matt back and to honor him for his accomplishments. Been to Olympics now.
You plus nine, you say he's not hearing you in the back.
Is that better?
Can you hear him now? Can you hear me now?
But we had a nice reception for Matt at six o'clock. And I would like to read this into the record again formally for the rest of the community that may not have been able to attend the reception for Matt. Whereas the Matt Grevers and his family are residents of the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Matt Grevers attended Lake, grade school in Lake Forest and is a graduate of Lake Forest High School, where he was a star of the swimming program. Whereas Matt Grevers in 2003 received at least four state high school records and set an Australian record while representing the USA Junior National Team. Whereas Matt Grevers represented the United States of America at the 2008 Olympic Games in Beijing, China, in men's swimming and achieved two gold medals and one silver medal. And whereas this past summer at the 2012 Junior, or Summer Olympics in London, England, Matt Grevers again represented the United States of America. And whereas Matt Grevers received a gold medal in the 100-meter backstroke and achieved two more gold medals and one more silver medal at the 2012 Olympics. Whereas Matt Grevers should be recognized as Lake Forest hometown hero and applauded not only for his athleticism but for his energetic spirit and determination. Therefore, I, James Cowie, Mayor of Lake Forest and State of Illinois, in recognition of the Olympic accomplishments of Matt Grevers, hereby proclaim this Fourth Day of September this 2012 as Matt Grevers' day. And again, Matt and his family were in attendance. And Matt's a special, special young man. His family has done so much as well for the community. And I think a lot of certainly folks here know and ones that are at the event earlier. But the whole family's been instrumental in helping the community in many ways and especially in the swimming world with Anya, the mom, being a swim coach in the, in the club arena. Sister Carolyn, the swim coach at the Lake Forest High School. Andy was a coach over in Evanston and now out at the University of Missouri. Matt's married another, will be marrying another swimmer, Annie, who was, did try out for the Olympics as well. So the whole family is quite remarkable in the whole swimming world. And we're very honored to have Matt certainly in the Lake Forest community. So again, congratulations to Matt and his family. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is, is adopted. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation of the Chamber of Commerce Week, which is September 10 through September 14. And I will read that into the record as well. This proclamation is, whereas Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Chamber of Commerce works with the businesses, merchants, and industry to advance the civic, economic, industrial, professional, and cultural life of the city of Lake Forest. And whereas chambers of commerce have contributed to the civic and economic life of Illinois for 174 years since the founding of the Galena Chamber of Commerce in 1838. And whereas this year marks the 93rd anniversary of the founding of the Illinois Chamber of Commerce, the state's leading broad-based business organization. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce and its members provide citizens with a strong business environment that increases employment, retail trade and commerce, and industrial growth in order to make City of Lake Forest a better place to live. And whereas this, the Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing industries, services, and commercial firms and encourages new firms and individuals to locate in the City of Lake Forest. Whereas the State of Illinois is the home to international chambers of commerce, the Great Lakes Region Office of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, the Illinois Chamber of Commerce, and more than 456 local chambers of commerce. And whereas this year marks the 97th anniversary of the Illinois Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, a career development organization for the Chamber of Commerce professionals. And therefore, I, James Cowie, Mayor of the City of Lake Forest, proclaim September 10 through September 14, 2012, as Chamber of Commerce Week in Lake Forest and call it significant to the citizens of the City of Lake Forest.
I move to add the proclamation. Good question. Do we need to add consolation to the proclamation?
No, proclamation is something the mayor has prerogative to do all of the time.
All right. There you go.
I'll second it. Let's go for it.
All right.
You can always improve this proclamation.
Appreciate that. So the proclamation is adopted. We thank you for the Chamber of Commerce and again, all of your endeavors and hard work.
Mr. Mayor, you do have to join a roll-up from the chamber.
Oh, we do.
To attend, sir.
Come on up. I'll even sign it for you if you want to.
Make it up.
I may or I may not if I find a fit. Sorry, Joanne, I didn't know you were there.
I didn't get back.
Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. And thank you all so much for this. Thank you. Thanks, bye.
The next item on the agenda this evening is an appointment of Lucinda Baylor to the Audit Committee. And the copy of the volunteer profile sheet is beginning on page 23 in your packet. And I'm just looking for a recommendation to approve the appointment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate that and welcome Lucinda to our, to the Audit Committee. Thanks for your involvement. I do have one more comment this evening. And I'd ask Michael Thomas to come on up. I understand you have a video for recycling.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mayor Members of the City Council. This evening, staff would like to introduce two high school students, Will and Strawn Dixon, juniors at Lake Forest High School, that this past spring put together a video to help us on our recycling efforts. And we're very thankful for their efforts. We're going to show the video. We're going to let Will and Strawn talk about why they wanted to produce the video, what was included. But I hope you will enjoy it. We did. We think it's a great video. It's going to really help us in our endeavors. So Will and Strawn, would you like to come on up?
In the summer of 2011, I participated in the Center for Conservation Leadership Program through Lake Forest Open Lands. The CCL program is a year-long experience that culminates with this stewardship project related to your own community. Throughout CCL, I, we learned that everything we do has an impact on the planet and that everyone has a responsibility to this planet. As such, my partner, Woody Travers, and I chose a project on recycling because it has an immediate impact on our earth and is something that everyone can do. When we met with Lake Forest's Public Works Department, they were embarking on a campaign to increase recycling in Lake Forest, too. We soon discovered that recycling can be an important revenue generator for the city in addition to being good for the planet. Not many people realize that economy and ecology are based on the same Greek root word, oikos, which has to do with managing your home. This shows that the economy and the environment are interconnected. For our CCL stewardship project, we created a public service announcement to parallel the new recycling effort and the introduction of the new recycling bins. This video will also be shown on public access channel and this will be introduced in the fall. I would like to thank my cousin, Strawn Dixon, for his tireless effort in producing and directing this video. And he put a lot of, he actually really did put a lot of effort into this and we really thank him for his collaboration. And I would like to thank Michael Thomas and Dan Martin at the Public Works Department and Suzie Hoffman at CCL for the opportunity. Thank you very much. We hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Dixon. And last summer, I participated in the Center for Conservation Leadership through Lake Forest Open Lands. Over the summer, we learned that our actions have a huge impact on the environment. And recycling, which is inexpensive and easy to do, can greatly benefit the environment. Aside from the environmental aspect, recycling also has a huge impact on the economy. We interviewed a municipal service representative from Lake Forest to tell us more about recycling.
A lot of times, we often remind residents to recycle office paper, cardboard, magazines, junk mail. It's forgotten a lot, well, and then phone books. It depends upon the market. All the material is sold at market. And the market obviously fluctuates. It's based upon dollars per ton. But this past year was a very good year for the city. We made about $150,000 on the sale of recycling. We introduced the recycling carts back in September of last year, September of 2011. And since the six months that we have introduced the 65-gallon carts, recycling has gone up 200 tons. Really, the, the reason behind the carts to fold, but we want residents to recycle more and all can be mixed together. We don't need to sort anything any longer. But hopefully, it's, it's much easier for the residents just to throw the material in. And the cart is very easy to transport to the curb. The old recycling bins, the 18-gallon recycling bins are all recycled. So we ask that the residents put them next to the cart on their recycling day. The bins that we collect are recycled. The city was successful last calendar year, 2011, in acquiring a grant from the State's Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We have approximately 6,500 households in town. And to give everybody one cart, it costs a little over $300,000. When we deliver the carts on the inside, we have a label that tells them what the residents want, they can and cannot. We'll actually hand-write the address in. Some carts don't get mixed up with neighbors. Currently, if we include our yard leas, which, which we do, obviously, all of the yard leas is recycled. So if we look at our waste stream between the recycled materials and the yard leas materials, we recycle approximately 40% of all of that material.
Aside from speaking to municipal service representatives, we also talked to a Lake Forest resident about the recycling habits.
We've, we've actually been part of the recycling program since its inception. We feel like it's, it's good for the environment. It's good for the economics of the city. And recently, over the past year, when the city introduced their carts, it made it much easier for us because as opposed to taking out two or three recycling bins that I'd have to load the back of the car and take it to the end of the driveway, I now just push the recycling bin out there. So that's, that's been a real plus for us.
In conclusion, recycling is simple, easy, and inexpensive and has profound impacts on both the economy and the ecology of Lake Forest.
I'll say thank you. That was very well done. And Michael, I might suggest that you send a copy of that to Dave Smith at Decio, where we received the grant money from. He might enjoy that as a, it's very nice. Very well done. Thank you.
Yeah. We're very appreciative of their efforts. They did a great job and we think it's going to help us in the campaign to recycle more materials. So this is something Dan and I were thinking about and when we received the call from Lake Forest Open Lands, we thought it'd be a great, great opportunity for, for both organizations and for the entire town. So we thank them. As a quick update, the remaining carts, the remaining 3,200 carts will be delivered between now and the end of September. We still have about 70 or so of the 35-gallon carts remaining. So if residents would like a smaller cart, they can call us and we'll either change them out or we'll give them the smaller cart right off the bat. But the next three weeks, we'll have all the carts delivered. And effective October 1st, we're done picking up the bins. We've got some long driveways. We're going to have to deal with those issues. But as of October 1, the bins are done and we're fully automated. So we're very happy with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And that concludes my comments this evening. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager, Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. We'll have to record this date so when Strawn wins an Academy Award, we can say it all started here.
That's right.
You may have noticed that there's a, a new vibrancy and energy in the community and that's because the Lake Forest College students are back. And we have a report here this evening from our college liaison. But before that, maybe, Mr. Mayor, you want to talk about the event that occurred last week down at the beach?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I was, I was very proud to be able to welcome the new Lake Forest College residents to Lake Forest. There was an event last week down on the beach. It was approximately 6 o'clock, 6:30. I know that the, a lot of the freshmen spent the day downtown. So they were kind of straggling in, a little tired from their travels earlier in the day. But they came down to the beach that evening and I was very happy to be able to welcome them to the community. I think it's, you know, somewhat, you know, somewhat forgotten that we have, you know, all these youngsters in, in college here in the community that are really residents while they're here. And so I think it was important for the city to again, welcome them and, and have them in our community. And I'm very thankful for liaison and the work that you've been doing now back and forth to bring the city and bring the kids from the college together. And a lot of the programs. And I think we have to remember that, again, we, you know, here I am, speaking as the old guy sitting up here. But we're, we all went through college and we all did those things in college that we probably shouldn't have done. But, you know, it's part of growing up and part of living. But it's a great honor to have, you know, such a great educational institution in our community. And we need to reach out and find more ways to, to build that collaboration between the two entities and to have more of an open dialogue and to welcome them. So that was, again, part of the reason. And it was a great event. And I think everyone behaved themselves, at least when I was there. So they had a nice time and, and welcomed, so.
And if they didn't, we expunge them from the police records. So Lucy, if you want to come up and, and give us, I know it's only been a couple of weeks now, but give us an update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, for having me come. As the mayor said, we did have our first big event last week and it went really well. I'll get back to that a little bit later. So I'll direct the attention to the screen now. So this is just going to be a, it's, I believe, a quarterly update on what the, my position as city liaison for the school and the community are working on in terms of communication and just really building that relationship. Here's just a short list of the efforts over the last five years. Some of the reasons this position really started and how it really kind of came to be the city liaison position that I now hold. As you can see, in 2008, there was a student retail shopping focus group that was students just collaborating to kind of figure out, you know, what might be offered in the city of Lake Forest in terms of maybe possibilities and discounts for students and things like that. In 2009, an Ask the Mayor column in the Stentor, which is the Lake Forest College newspaper, was kind of began to snowball a little bit more. We got, we had the previous mayor answer some questions and that started to go in. And that will be coming back. We've got some questions out to the mayor that we're very excited about. That'll be a new thing for the students and I can guarantee the students are very excited about having the opportunity to ask mayor-county questions regarding, you know, his attitude toward Lake Forest College, what's going on in the city, things like that, to really keep the students informed about what's going on in the city as well. In 2009, there was a Hot Chocolate with the Mayor that was also, from what I've heard from the older students, very, very well-liked. And that will hopefully be another event that will come on, maybe when it's a little bit colder out, not so warm. In 2010, there was a focus group with the mayor, city manager, and student government, as you can see. And that kind of really put on the plate what could be changed, what position might be able to be created, that sort of thing. And then in 2011, Matt Damaris was the gentleman that really officially established this position. He went to city, or he went to student government and said, "This is a position I believe we need." And then I was appointed in 2012, in January of 2012, and began my work. As you can see, there have been over 24 interns with, that have worked for City Hall, which is fabulous. I know some of them and they all love being able to come into the city and work for the city and see how the City of Lake Forest really works. So just kind of back to this year. As the mayor said, we had the Welcome to Lake Forest Beach Party and I thought that it was a great turnout. I know that the administration at Lake Forest College was very happy in the communication with the City of Lake Forest. I do have a couple quotes from some students that attended. Junior Jordan Shizik said, "It was great to see the city getting involved with the students. A fun, exciting way to begin the year. It was perfect." Sophomore Anna Bryan said, "I love getting to put a face with the mayor. Seeing him there showed me how important he believes LFC is to the community." So those are just a few short quotes from the students. It was, they're really excited about it. This will be, hopefully, an annual thing that happens every time students return. So they're really looking forward to that. The Live Work Play app is another great promotion for students. I have it on my phone. I know a lot of students with iPhones have it on there. Shows some discounts in Lake Forest for students and community members. And it's a great way to really kind of stay up to date on Lake Forest, the City of Lake Forest. Croia Connections, we do work with Croia, which as you know, is the after-school program. And I know a lot of, I actually work there myself when I'm not in tennis season and go. And it's a great time. We use the facility at Croia for other various projects as well, which is great. And then on September 12th, we're really excited, the CEO of Priceline.com is coming to speak. And that's something that's been a joint, a joint partnership between the city and the school as well. Obviously, like I said before, the internship and now the business and technology incubator is a new, new thing that's being started up as well. We'll have some interns there. And the Lake Forest College has a garden where we grow our own vegetables. And I know that they are just thrilled to be at the Saturday Farmer's Market. I actually got a chance to go out. I stayed on campus this summer, got a chance to go out and speak with the head of the Lake Forest College Garden. And they're just so excited to be a part of that. So our plans over the next, next five years and just kind of in general, just to get it out there is some more increased, obviously, coordination with speakers and activities and things like that on the campus and in the city. We'd really like to see this relationship build as much as we can, have a very strong relationship between the college and the town. Obviously, we'd love to see more residents on campus, whether it's for athletic events, Greek life events, anything like that, anything that we can get the community involved and we would love to. And as I said, Sydney Fletcher is the head of the garden at Lake Forest College and she is now the farmer, Farmer's Market Manager through October 2013, as you can see, which is very exciting for us. So these are just some pictures from the Welcome Back Beach Bash. You can kind of see the red and black banners. The red and black, obviously, are Lake Forest College school colors. So those got put up on the beach, which was fun. Little bit better kind of view. There, there were decent amount of students there, as mayor, the mayor said. Freshmen straggled in a little bit later due to some tiredness from the city. And we had a lot of great fun. There was bags going, there was frisbees. I know some people braved the water and headed out to do boating, kayaking, some paddle boarding, boarding, things like that. So it was a really fun experience and really great for the students to see the relationship that is building between the city and the school. So that's all I have, just an update. If there are any questions from the City Council members, I'd love to take those.
Just compliment, Sydney, the summer's been great at the Farmer's Market. I think I've bought half the things that they had to offer. And it's a program that I just hope continues just to kind of bring the college into contact with the city that much more. But appreciation to her, she's been great. And I think the Farmer's Market goes a few more weeks. So just great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, City Council members. Mayor.
Thank you.
Lucy, thank you very much. I have just one question. If you buy vegetables from Lake Forest College at the Farmer's Market, does it make you smarter?
I'm going to say yes.
Good answer. Good answer.
It hasn't worked for everyone.
The next update is the City Council knows our hands-free ordinance went into effect September 1st. You may have noticed some people parked on the side of the street as they're talking on their cellphones right now. But we've asked Acting Chief Jim Held, and I don't know if Susan Banks is going to help out as well, to give us an update on the ordinance, where the signs are and sort of how the program's going to be implemented in the first few months. So Jim?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. As you know, September 1st was the beginning of this enforcement ordinance. We've always taken a position with new ordinances, especially when it comes to traffic, is to give a 30-day grace period, so to speak. So only warnings will be issued for the first 30 days. And after that, administrative tickets can be issued as well as warnings. It's an author discretion type of call. The only other issue where it might be a traffic ticket is if somebody would be stopped for talking on their cellphone and it led to something else, say they had a suspended driver's license or something like that, where that charge would go to a branch court. Then it would be giving a hard ticket for the cellphone also to go to branch court. So they would have to go to two different places for the charges. There is still a pending statewide ban, I think everybody knows it, that's still waiting to happen. Not sure what the progress is on that for the state right now. The fines are $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, and then $300 for the third offense after that and subsequent offense. So it's only been a few days. I haven't had a whole lot of feedback from our officers yet. But I think as, as Mr. Kiley just said, you do see some other people, the people are kind of pulling over a little more. So I think right now, they're aware of it. We've got the signs on the backs of the parking scooters. We had some signs in the central BD. We had some signs at all the entrances to the town, just like our no parking, 3:00 to 5:00 a.m. signs. So hopefully, the word will get out that way and hopefully, it'll, it'll work for us. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jim, Chief, I think one thing that might be helpful and I don't know, maybe we put it on the website or whatever, but it's still hard to believe that people don't really understand what is hands-free. And I mean, it seems like, I say that, but yet even close friends and family members, you know, I say, "Don't you have a Bluetooth?" I say, "Don't you have a Bluetooth?" "Oh, my car isn't set up." And no, you don't need a, your car is, I mean, you know, this is just the earpiece. Or, you know, maybe if we could put some other information, okay, what is it, where do you get it, where are they available, what's compatible? You know, I mean, it seems to me that would be common sense, but I think it's, what I've noticed is a lot of people really don't understand what that means or what it is.
Yeah, and I guess we could put more information on the website regarding that. It's kind of hard to get that out to people. Yeah, I'm with you. I agree, I think that it's such a common term these days, you would assume people know what that means, but I'm sure there are several people that really don't understand it. So I think we may do a little better job of trying to educate people what hands-free is, and that you're required to have the Bluetooth. So we can probably try and do a little better job with that on the website with information, yes?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
I think a bigger problem is texting, texting or even dialing a number.
Yeah, texting, yeah, texting already is illegal in the state and very hard to enforce. I mean, people have the phones in their laps and it's very difficult to enforce.
But before you talk on the phone, unless you have, like in my car, I can, I can just say the name and it will dial it, but if you have a, if you're trying to dial a number and drive, that's dangerous.
It's, it's very dangerous, and you know, the conversation also is dangerous. Sometimes even with the, with the Bluetooth, people get wrapped up in the conversations and that's a distraction also. So it's kind of, a lot of different things are coming into play with it, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Susan, if you want to put up the next slide. As the city council knows, this past summer, a community task force was formed following the recent tragedies with a few teen suicides. And I think while there was some initial exposure when they had their first meeting, people have been asking, so what's going on, what's been happening during that period of time? And Susan is putting up there right now, it's a little dark, but we'll get it here in a moment. There have been a number of activities that have been going on since early June, when the initial workshop was held with about seventy community representatives participating, representing seventeen different community organizations. At that time, too, the head of the Division of Psychology at Northwestern University School of Medicine was participating, and they're working on developing a list of recommendations, maybe. Kathy, can you go give her a hand? It's not responding.
It's not getting any better.
And so they have been working on coming up with some recommendations, and those will be happening soon. I think now that we're back in, in session, that there will be a lot more in the newspaper and going out to the students through the schools and Lake Forest Hospital as well. But one of the things that we wanted to mention there particularly is the fact that there's two things residents really can do to stay involved and stay up to speed in what's going on. Number one is certainly bringing in speakers and other resources does cost money. And the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital has set up an office of philanthropy, and I think up there on the screen is the information, if people want to make a donation towards this effort. I know they've received a number of donations to this point in time, but they certainly would be interested in accepting more. And then finally, there is a website, and they can also go on the communitetaskforce.wellness, I'm sorry, lakeforestlakebluffwellness.org, and submit any comments, questions, and there are people that are monitoring that and will respond to this. And I'm sure that when the recommendations are released, that members of the task force will be coming back before the city council and sort of detailing what those recommendations are and what the timetable is for implementation of those recommendations. So while they've gone sort of in their quiet stage during the summer while school was out, I think we're gonna start to see a lot more of that gearing back up again over the course of the next sixty to ninety days. So I just wanted to brief the council and the community on that. And then Susan, can we switch over to the PowerPoint? Please? Maybe? We gotta get a new system. That's right. It's coming shortly.
Kathy, please. Yes, please, thank you.
Can this one? On the S-drive, I assume. Didn't you put it on there? Okay. Bear with us one second. No, that's okay. The, as the city council knows, the city of Lake Forest has had a long tradition and history of doing municipal shared services. Some examples of this include water interconnection, and which helped out tremendously this summer when we had to open up the interconnection with Highland Park during the drought conditions. We've also been involved with various mutual aid and public safety on both police and fire. We've been dispatching for both Lake Bluff and Highwood for a period of time, as well as various other public works projects that have come before the city council through either jointly working on like a road resurfacing project or other joint bidding. The, as the council knows also, during the recent strategic planning discussion, there was a lot to, a lot of discussion about what we can do going forward to continue this collaboration and continue the shared services, even hopefully to a greater extent than we have been up to this point in time. Some of the comments that are included in the strategic plan are, encourage us to participate in multi-jurisdictional consortiums, continuously evaluate our operating expenses and see what we can do with sharing and pooling more resources, but then at the same time also making sure that by contracting out and doing more joint services, that we also don't diminish the quality of service that we provide our residents. Some of our partners to date have included Lake Bluff, Highwood, Highland Park, the other eighteen communities, and the Municipal Partnering Initiative, but also School District 67, 115, Lake Forest College, Conway Office Park, Open Lands, Garden Clubs, and a host of other people that we've worked with at various times in different capacities. The reason for me mentioning this is that we're taking this now to another level, and in the, I think the next thirty days, you'll be seeing a proposal to engage a consultant to come in to take a look at centralized dispatching for the communities of Highland Park, Highwood, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff. That may grow to a larger group because the scope of service for their request for proposal is not to just look at bringing these four communities together, but to look at all the options that are out there and to possibly do something even larger than just the four. You may have read in the paper recently that Libertyville and Countryside Fire Protection District just joined up with Vernon Hills. Well, that may be an option for the four communities as well. Again, looking at ways of doing things more efficiently, trying to spread those limited dollars that we have, but continue to maintain a high level of service for the residents. Right now, our goal is to award the contract in September to, it'll take about three to five months to complete the study, and that we will have recommendations back to the respective four communities in the first quarter of 2013. And so that will give us time, if we're gonna then incorporate it into budgetary considerations for FY14. The second item that is also gonna be coming to you here very shortly is a study that we've been working on for over a year now, and that's the Shared Fire EMS Service Study. Again, with those same four communities, we've been working with ICMA to undertake this study, and it looks like the report will be done in late September, early October. Our game plan at this point in time is to bring the four communities together to hear a joint presentation on the report and recommendation, and then to look at what, if any, action steps we might take going forward. A joint fire EMS service is, is not common in the state of Illinois, and so we really are going to be out ahead of the curve on this one, and we want to make sure that if we decide to move in this direction, that we do it for all the right reasons. And again, making sure that we are not minimizing or diminishing the quality of service that we provide our residents, recognizing that public safety is one of the most important services that our residents expect from us here at the city. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up that those things are percolating, and you're gonna see a lot more about those in the next, in the final quarter of 2012 and the first quarter of 2013. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about shared services. Go ahead.
Just one comment, and yeah, it's something that's come up a little more on Public Works with the resurfacing projects, installing new curbs with the consortiums with other communities. The one thing that maybe has affected us to a certain degree is it's always been the hue and crying goal of Public Works to get the street resurfacing completed before school starts again, for safety, for making sure the traffic moves easily. This year, it's been a little more of an effort, I think, getting the projects completed. So again, I appreciate the idea of moving in that direction, but there are some services that are affected. Maybe the price saving's great, but the loss of control on delivering the product might be something we might wanna reexamine on some of these efforts.
Yeah, Alderman, I, we fully agree with that. And I think this is sort of the learning curve that we're in with this, as to how large is too large in terms of a contractor being able to effectively and efficiently move in and do a project. I think from our standpoint, what we're really concerned about is from start to finish, it's a long period of time because they can come in and do the curb work, and then it might be a month before they come in and scarify the pavement and so forth. And I don't know if that's an issue of joint purchasing as much as we didn't do a good job, good enough job on the contract, and making sure that we had different deadlines and tighten those deadlines in terms of when the projects have to be done. So that's gonna be something that we are going to, at the end of the project, debrief, talk about what went right, what didn't go well, how we might be adjusted, or if we might just decide, you know what, the city of Lake Forest is large enough in and of itself that we might just decide we're gonna do it on our own. Because as you know, we do about 1.5, 1.7 million dollars a year. Some of these other communities are only doing 300 to 500,000 dollars. And so really, we are the big dog, if you will, in terms of that bid, and it just might be too big that we're not really realizing, yes, we're realizing a savings, but is it significant enough for the inconvenience?
Exactly.
Bob, if you, my, one quick question. You know, I know the, the whole purpose of, of shared services is to find low-hanging fruit, to find some money. I'm, I'm really concerned when we start talking about things like shared dispatch. It feels like it's beginning to cut a little bit more deeply, and as you said, the level of service we provide to the residents. Are there other communities, either locally, regionally, that you're aware of that have implemented shared dispatch, and has it been successful? You know, I've had a couple residents who've heard about the process a little bit, and their response to me is, hey, you know, I can't imagine not walking into the police station and having an officer there. And so you, we're gonna benefit from, obviously, the cost savings, but that service level, I think, maybe felt more than we might think. I'm interested in if there are other communities, as you started the process, that you've gotten some feedback from and what that's been.
Actually, from a municipal standpoint, central dispatch is low-hanging fruit. We're one of the few that's, and actually, we do it right now for Highwood and Lake Bluff. So we are, in a sense, centralized dispatching, but on a very small scale. There is so much new technology out there that almost makes it seamless, except for the individual who wants to walk into the police station, and generally, it's off-hours. And some of the things that we've talked about is, you know, we could stage our records people so that the building is actually open until midnight, maybe opens up at 6:00 AM. But potentially, if we go down this path, the real savings come, come from not having that live body there waiting for someone to come in. Somebody sent me something the other day that, you know, you could put in the Alcove area, the public safety building, an actual camera, a video camera that goes right to the dispatch so that they can see you, you can see them. And then what they're doing then is dispatching a police officer to then let you into the main building to take your report or provide whatever service is necessary. So it's not uncommon, actually, if anything, it's probably less common to be on your own these days. And, and again, it, the savings isn't so much on the manpower, even though that's an important savings, but looking at our CIP, we're three to four years away when we're gonna have to do a significant upgrade to our equipment in our dispatch center. And then you're talking, you know, half a million dollars, three-quarters of a million dollars. And the real question then becomes the redundancy because everybody's got the same systems. One of the things that we learned through the RFP process, though, is, is that they're getting to a point of almost virtual dis, centralized dispatching, where you can actually have interconnection between various communities and various departments, and you still have some of your equipment there, but you don't have to make the, the extensive upgrades that you would. A good example might be Highland Park keeps theirs, we keep ours, but on a night of Ravinia, you know, something happens, they can then use ours almost as a backup system, and they're actually working for residents and anybody calling in for services as one unified dispatch center. So there's some really interesting things that are going on out there, the technology is, is changing so rapidly. But again, those are the kinds of things that we feel that we have an obligation to at least stay up on and stay abreast of to try and keep these costs in check as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
The final item I have is a request for a special event that we received recently. Mark Weskett, the owner of Market House, which I continue to refer to as Southgate, and I know Mark's gonna kill me for saying that, but having called it that for so long, it's hard to change. But Market House wants to hold a Oktoberfest on Saturday, September 29th, from the hours of 6:00 PM to 11:30 PM. And he has met with city staff, we've talked about the logistics, really talked about the safety, and as the council knows, one of the big issues that we always wrestle with is the access to alcohol, particularly underage drinking, which is something that we try and control as much as we possibly can. But in the write-up of your package, you saw that the staff met with them. We think that we can provide both security and fencing there to make sure that we reduce the risk of any underage drinking or any problems like that. There will be a ban there. I think it would be a really nice event, try and bring some late-night entertainment and activity to downtown Lake Forest, which is something we've been talking about for a number of years. There will be the additional insurance requirement there protecting the city because part of the street will be blocked off for tables, chairs, and, and people who are dining there. And so we, we bring this forward to the city council, both for, number one, to let everybody know that this would happen if the city council were to approve it, but also, we want to make sure that, we haven't done a lot of this, and we want to make sure that we walk before we run, and we want to make sure we do it right, and we will then provide a report back to the city council if none of you are there. Some of you will probably be there and experience it yourselves, but come back and say what worked, what didn't work. So if we get another request down the road, that we have a little better control or a little better experience with these kinds of events going forward. So staff recommendation is to approve the event with the conditions that are set forth in the packet of the one officer, the temporary fencing, the additional certificate of insurance, naming the city as additionally insured. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or the acting chief is here too, if you have any really hard questions.
Just a, I'm sorry, just a quick comment. I think, I think it's a, a nice idea, and we've talked about ways to try to get people into Market Square, into downtown, and I think it's a, you know, it's a nice, new, fresh idea, and I think, you know, as long as it's done well and it's done right, that makes a lot of sense. And since I'm the liquor commissioner, I have to sign off on it.
That's right.
I definitely want to make sure they do it right. But also, as, as a, as a precursor, as, as you and I have spoken, that we have the BMW event coming up here a year from now. The golf outing will be held at Conway Farms Club, and we're gonna have a lot of public presence. I know that BMW has spoken, Lisa's spoken to me and some, some other staff about possibilities of holding some type of event like this again in the fall of next year, like we did for the 150th celebration with maybe a, another Oktoberfest-type atmosphere with music, live music, and the public could, could attend. So I think it, this would be a nice little trial. Obviously, maybe on a smaller scale, but it would be a nice trial, and I think it makes sense for us to, to do it. So I do know that staff has, has asked, I'm gonna keep saying the wrong name too, sorry. It's hard to, it's hard to get out of that habit, but has asked the owners to please look at the, your, your backdoor services for your refuse and your recycling, and if you'd please comply with the recommendations and the regulations that we have as far as the fencing and cleaning that area up, because we have had some comments by public and comments by others. So we'd ask you also if you'd take care of that before the event. I think that would, that would be appropriate as well.
I don't know, Mark, if you want to come up and, and say anything, maybe I've, hopefully I haven't given out any erroneous information.
No, I think that's exactly right. I appreciate you all taking the time to kind of look at this event. I think it's, I think what Bob said is exactly what we wanted. I think it's, I think what Bob said is exactly what we wanted to do, is create an environment where downtown Market Square, people start congregating. I know when I go up to Lake Bluff, they have similar type events and they're very low-keyed. No one's trying to throw some very large, dramatic party. It's just a situation where families and, you know, people can kind of congregate in the area, listen to music. Yes, they'll obviously be drinking some beer, it is Oktoberfest, that's kind of the point in it, but it's also to try to, you know, show that you can do all those things in, in a safe, fun environment where there aren't any concerns and it's okay for kids to see their parents, you know, drinking a beer and enjoying themselves and, and watching, you know, if we set this up right, their parents up on a stage playing music, because that's kind of the format that we want. The Market House is first and foremost a, a neighborhood restaurant and we want to do all the things that we can to kind of foster that. And this is along those lines. So I, I think it's something that can, can bring people into Market Square and do a better job at, yet creating a sense of community. Those are my comments.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, Mark, I'm happy to see the event and supportive of it and it's great to have something in Lake Forest where after you're done eating, you might actually want to stay downtown, bring a little more vibrancy, which I'm hoping this will have great success so we can move on to similar events.
Thank you, Mark.
I think it's a great idea. Am I in commotion? Is there time or?
I'll second.
To approve under the conditions as laid out by the city staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, and that does complete my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members. And I know we do have two, the committees will make comments. Public Works Committee, first being Alderman Noven.
Well, they, they got me already on part A.
They did.
So again, that was part of, that was discussed earlier with the recycling program.
We did cover that earlier. Any other comments from, from the Public Works Committee?
Well, we have some items that we're going to revisit. You know, the big thing for us is noting to the public right now as far as recycling program and the deadline with the second phase of the implementation of the need for using the recycling carts and kind of reminding the public that the acceptance of the carts is important because obviously recycling is something that can generate income for the city, but also if the recycling isn't used, the cost of carting the refuge is another costly item for the city. So you might not like it, but as a member of the community, it benefits the community by participating in this program. So again, we want everyone to get on board to use the carts and benefit the city at the same time. And I think the cutoff date on that is October 1st, Mike, or?
The, as I noted previously, the carts will be delivered over the next two to three weeks. So if residents are interested in the smaller size cart, we ask that they contact our department to, to order the smaller one. But October 1st, you are absolutely correct. Come October 1st, we're going strictly with the carts.
Yeah. And again, personal preference is one thing, but costing the community for asserting yourself, if you don't like the carts, you know, do it for the community.
Correct. And as I had noted a couple of months ago, just with half the town being on carts, we've seen our recycling go up by 17 percent. So if it, if it works out the same, we could see another significant increase, which will decrease the amount we spend on tipping fees. There's a direct correlation. So we ask everybody to participate.
And, and Public Works, we have some items for approval on the omnibus with purchase of vehicles. We'll get to that.
Very good. Thank you, Kent. And our next item is the Golf Course Advisory Committee, Alderman Edelman.
I'll just make some brief introductory remarks and then turn it over to Jeff. Golf Advisory Committee last met in July. We took the month of August off, we're meeting in a couple of weeks to kind of wrap up this Just intuitively, it's been a great season at the golf course. Last year, we were challenged by storms. This year, we were challenged by oppressive heat, which I think kept some golfers off the course as well. And that coupled with the water restriction may have hurt us a little bit. I know I watched a Parks and Rec Board meeting where they talked about a well. I'm not sure where we are in the process of moving forward, weaning ourselves off of city water at the golf course and transitioning to our own well, but I think we're moving in that direction. Rick Walworth seems to be doing a great job out at the golf course. He's discussed with me informally a couple of areas where he thinks there needs to be some adjustment. People who have season memberships who, in the month of August, tend to abandon those tee times on Saturday, which are prime tee times, and not giving notice. He could resell those empty airline seats, so to speak, and generate some revenue. So there's going to have to be a hard look at how we can change that methodology so perhaps we can sell those vacated tee times. Richard Franklin, I know his school of golf instruction's been going gangbusters. Everybody raves about him. I've seen him giving instruction to get back out there. He has a pretty full dance card. Jeff could give you the details on our fiscal year first quarter 2013, so I'm now going to turn it over to Jeff Wade, our superintendent of Special Facilities.
Great. Thank you, Edelman, uh, excuse me, Councilman Edelman. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. This first quarter financial review will highlight memberships, rounds, revenue and expenses to date. I just want to say that it has been a great learning experience as well as a great partnership working with Kemper Sports Management and the Golf Advisory Committee to improve the financial condition of Deer Path. And I think together we've made great improvements on putting Deer Path back on a, a good financial foundation for this fiscal year and for the future. As Councilman Edelman had indicated, we did struggle this year, as we did last year, with some we- some weather. We came into April going really well with rounds. Into June, we started to see a little drop off and then when we hit July, the extreme heat and the few days of rain that we did get, we saw a significant decrease in rounds. We saw 61 percent of July's playable days affected by adverse conditions, either heat or rain. But with that, we are only $13 short of budget for revenue. We did have numerous marketing efforts that we implemented that we will evaluate in this fall when we see a lot more of the fiscal year completed. But two that we did for July was the season pass test drive and the beat the heat green fees. The general manager, Rick Walrath, and I, we knew the heat was upon us and that we had to do something because we saw some drops, drop off. So we did do the, the beat, beat the heat greens fee, which we saw a lot of good play on that, but because we discounted it so much, it did affect cart revenue and daily revenue. However, we, I think we ended with July over last year to this date in rounds played. The, we also did some, a third-party booking with Golf Now, which is owned by NBC Sports, to help get out the word about Deer Path and to sell some unutilized time. That was, we started that in the last couple of days in July and now we're seeing some great traction on that. We're seeing anywhere from, I believe, eight to nine rounds tee times in return for the one that we, we give them to sell on their own. So it's been really good and that does help us out a lot with getting those last two days of tee times. They really specialize in, in hitting those, those times to be able to sell for us. Just a quick on memberships, as we reported back, we are down on memberships, but we did see, well, actually, we're over where we thought we'd be on memberships and the, the number that we sold, but membership fees are down because we did a lot of discounting for the Lake Forest Country Day School and the Academy, which we sell half memberships to. Again, rounds, we're at 42 percent of what we budgeted for, but again, we are over where we were previously. As Councilman Edelman mentioned, Richard Franklin, our Director of Instruction through the Academy, has done a tremendous job of lessons and, and camps. And in fact, he's, through July, he was 143 percent over budget and we still have fall, winter, and spring programming yet to do. So we're going to realize some significant increases in that revenue. Overall, expenses are 36 percent of budget. We did see in the maintenance area, we, because of the, the water restrictions, we did use water more so this year than we did last year. And in the cases where we couldn't use water, we had to use chemicals. So we're going to see a lot more expenses out of that budget than, than in others. But overall, the course is on track with its financial performance and if we experience a decent fall season, we are confident that we will see an improvement over the fiscal year last year. If anyone has any questions, I'll be more happy to answer.
I have a formatting question, if I could.
Sure.
On the, on the, the actual budget and budget, budget percentages?
Yes.
Are you, this is just for the first quarter?
First quarter, yes.
First quarter. So the, and the budget amounts are only for the first quarter. So all these numbers are for a quarter or for a year?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we, we didn't, this, the, the budget amounts for the, for the full year, we were, and then what you see there is in reflection, yes, sorry.
That's how it appeared to be.
Yes.
In, in the future, when, when the reports come in, it, it's hard to tell if we're ahead or behind. You have monthly budgets or quarterly budgets. It'd be better to see a, if, if we're looking at an actual quarterly number, then we shouldn't, in, in my analytical opinion, be seeing an annual budget amount.
Right.
It, it doesn't allow any interpretation.
Okay.
Only you would know whether we're ahead or behind.
Okay.
Because we don't know what, what's expected in the first quarter.
Okay.
We just know that we're, I mean, it, it looks great, 59 percent of revenue after one quarter and 36 percent of, of expenses, but we don't know if all the expenses come in the second quarter, as you were.
Right.
So I, it's a, in, in reviewing this, I'd like to be able to tell from the numbers in preparation for the meeting, before we get your narrative, how we're doing.
Okay.
And I could, I could figure it out from this.
Okay, good point.
It may just be me, but something that's relative to the quarter, both on budget and revenue expense.
Okay. I, I will make that adjustment.
Other than that, that's congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, for Jeff?
Okay, thank you.
Mike, will you have anything to add? Are you done?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Any other comments by council members?
If Mike would have just had one more round, we could have made up that $13.
$13.
And he didn't have it in him.
Could have hit a few more bucket of balls, we would have been there.
Yeah. That may, I, I may have, but. Bob, would it be appropriate to update on the wireless or not? Just to the point of, okay, because it's to you, but, because we've had, we've had a little bit of a culmination. We've been working very hard with the Wireless Communication Task Force, you know, for quite a while. And we, we've invited people with, you know, tremendous emotion and opinion and a lot of work done, who, who had many different opinions and many different feelings on this. And I'd like to say thank you to Kathy for organizing this and, and, you know, being at all these meetings and getting a group together that has, I, I'd say we're in a 100 percent agreement. And moving ahead with the recommendation that not only is agreed to by the task force, but also Bear College is happy and the few detractors that we had are also on board with us now after, after vetting all the different ideas. And I just wanted to let you know there's a good solution on the way. And it's been, what, six, six, seven months? So I think it's, 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 it's good news. Details to follow, they're still being worked out, but I think it's a, if, if, for those who have copied down the letter, and I just wanted to say thanks again, so.
And we look forward to your recommendation.
To the commissioners, or to the task force as well, the members.
Any other comments by council members? Yes?
Yeah, I'll, just a couple of quick ones. And I mentioned it to a couple of you earlier, and that is, I've received some complaints about bicyclists and skateboarders in the downtown central business district, and maybe we can get some signage up, remind the people to get off and carry their boards and walk their bikes. And the second item is over on the west end of Everett Road, right before you cross 294. They resurfaced the bridge this summer. There is a separate pedestrian bicycle path on that bridge that the bikers don't use, the bicyclists. And they're riding their bikes and they're really presenting a danger because people coming over the bridge can't see over the hill. Maybe we can get some signage up there saying bicyclists, please use the bike path over the bridge.
Mike, it's already up there and I don't think they pay attention to it. It's already signed there.
It's not conspicuous, maybe. Or maybe we've got to enforce it.
It may be an enforcement issue, so we'll have to ask, ask.
Why don't you know?
Thank you. If we know you've been aware of it. Any other comments?
Watch out for bicyclists talking on their cell phones. They do.
I just had one other issue and I, I've gotten a few calls on it. And to a certain degree, it's, we, we've had an event where there was a fence put up in a ravine where I've gotten numerous phone calls. And at least the drive in my ward has been to maybe examine permits issued for installation of fences. And what I was going to ask in response is possibly if we could ask city staff to direct the plan commission to reexamine the zoning ordinance as far as installation of fences as a whole in the community, it might be responsive to the fence, fence issue that's come up. I don't want to focus on the one installation, but again, as we move forward, I, I think we need a policy revision on this. So it'll be a great time. And if council would be on board for this, I truly appreciate it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would certainly support it.
And would I need a motion to?
I think it could be deemed as direction that the staff can pick up the ball and run with.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments by council members? Excuse me? No? Then we'll move on to the next item. The agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone from the public? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Georgia West. I live on 300 Bluffs Edge Drive. I have talked to both of our councilmen about the fence and the feelings of the people on our street. We only have nine families on our street, but it is part of a subdivision that has a pedestrian throughway in the ravine to get to the beach. And people that live on our street kind of think of that as kind of our summer place and so we go down to the beach a lot. And although the fence doesn't prevent us from going to the beach, it is a seven-foot stockade fence right next to the ravine, right next to the path that we have to take about 600 feet through the ravine to get to the beach. And it certainly does change the feel of, of a walk in the woods to a walk down a fence, a seven-foot height stockade fence. So we are not very happy about this. We agree that we're not convinced that the, the permit should have been issued in the first place because the ravine is, in our opinion, a protected area, a protected tree area, and there were probably about 200 posts put in the ground at the edge of the bluff, the toe of the bluff, in order to wreck that fence. We don't think that's very good for the stability of the ravine. And so we have our concerns about when it rains, where the water is going to be directed, and how much it will increase the slippage of the bluff, thereby making it much more difficult to get down to our beach. So I just wanted to tell you that. difficult to get down to our beach. So I just wanted to tell you that I have talked to a number of our neighbors, and we are concerned about it, and we're very happy to hear that it's going to be looked at, the ordinances. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
This would be more directed towards city staff without focusing too much on single
issue, but I noticed there were numerous trespass signs put in the area of the pier, and my base assumption would be for those who are in the subdivision that the path is open to those that are, have houses located in the subdivision.
That's correct.
The subdivision plan actually gives rights to both people within that subdivision and within a neighboring subdivision.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public wishes to make comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is items for the omnibus vote consideration. There are 13 items this evening. I'm going to read the 13 items for the record, and then the council may choose one, any, or all, as I so desire, for approval. The first item being check register for the period July 28th to August 24, 2012. The second being adopting the July 12, 2012 amendment to the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance to remain a Lake County certified stormwater community. The third being an award of contract for the boat storage yard resurfacing project. The fourth being an approval of the assistance to fire grant system, AFG, for video conferencing to be installed in both city firehouses in the amount of $21,514 from the fiscal year 13 CIP budget. The fifth being an award of purchase for the replacement of a half-ton extended cab pickup truck for the water and sewer utilities section, which is included in the fiscal year 2013 capital equipment budget. The sixth being an award of purchase for replacement of a one-ton hook lift dump truck for the parks, parks and forestry section included in the 2013 capital equipment budget. The seventh being an award of a bid for two box plows for the streets and sanitation section, which is included in the 2013 capital equipment budget. The eighth being an award of purchase for the replacement of a one-ton dump truck for the parks and forestry section. Again, this isn't the 2013 capital equipment budget. The ninth being an award of a bid for a one-side dump 25-yard trailer for the streets and sanitation, water and sewer utilities, and parks and forestry section, again, in the 2013 capital equipment budget. The tenth being approval of the purchase of fiscal year 2013 computer workstations and laptops for all city departments. The eleventh being an approval to renew contracts for telecommunications services with call one through the suburban purchasing cooperative of the Northwest Municipal Conference. The twelfth being a death certificate fee increase, and the last one being an approval of the July 16, 2012 regular city council minutes. Any questions, comments, or any of those 13 items?
Yeah, I actually got one, and it's not the most exciting one. In the minutes, under the Public Works items, there was opportunity for citizens to address council. The second item, and this is going to be miniscule, was, it says a resident at 131 Washington Road expressed an opinion against Wedgewood. Actually, it was a citizen expressed an opinion against the development at 131 West Washington Road duplicating plans. So it's just getting the focus. I don't know if it-
I'd like to look at number 11.
Sure.
So, 11 and 13?
Can we make the changes to the record, and then, yes, Alderman Moore?
On, on number 11 with the telecommunications, a three-year contract, we've been, we just, I just had a little chat with it, where we've had such dramatic price differences in telecommunications over any two- or three-year period, prices have gone in half in the past four years for us at our business. I don't know the nuances of what the, what the city requires for telecommunications, nor why I want to have that discussion here. It just seems the term in today's day and age is, is unrealistically long, and I don't know if there's a defense for that or if it was an oversight, but I'll let it go. I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, thank you, Alderman, and I don't know if Elizabeth can shed any more light on this. This is actually a contract through the Northwest Municipal Conference and their suburban purchasing cooperative, so unfortunately, I can't tell you why they went for three years. There's, I think, 35 different communities that are involved in the same bid. So again, I don't know if that varies or differs from what an individual municipality or company could go out and do on its own versus the 35 collectively doing, but-
It worries me more, based on Illinois, but-
Yeah. So, if you want to table it, we could certainly, you know, learn more about why this is just the bid that they did, so if we didn't accept this, we'd have to go out and rebid it on our own. I don't know, Elizabeth is approaching, so maybe I said something wrong.
No, it's not wrong. The only nuance with it is that, under the two options that we have offered to us with the suburban purchasing cooperative, under the option one, which is the AT&amp;T option, that is the strict SPC agreement that is subject to the one-year extensions through the suburban purchasing cooperative. So in the event that the SPC does not agree to the one-year extension, then the contract is null and void, and we would be subject to any extension or any agreement we can negotiate at that time. So in the event, we would take option one, which is not the recommendation. The recommendation is option two, which is the call-one carrier and the three-year agreement because it's a more advantageous pricing option. But if we took option one and the SPC did not agree to the extension at December 31st, we would be renegotiating a new agreement effective January 1st, but we would be subject to the one-year extensions under the SPC agreement with option one.
I really don't want to be petty with the budget or size and an amount this size, but we only have two options, and we've got a really bad one and a three-year telecommunications. It just doesn't, if you, and I, if it's something we could look at in the future, I'd be just happy, but I, it seems extraordinary to the, to the times, I guess. It seems unrealistic because we're never asked for that.
Okay.
We have a, you know, got 160 employees and, you know, hundreds of phones, and we pay half this with one-year terms. So I don't know how that compares to Lake Forest. It just seemed, it seemed awkward.
The shorter term, the shorter term had a higher pricing, so you paid a premium for a shorter period.
Okay.
So.
We can certainly pass those comments on to the suburban purchasing cooperative when they go out and do this again and mention that to them.
Yeah, for the next time, then, so we can include it then.
Okay.
So just, I guess, just the minutes.
Okay. Any other?
Drop that.
That's no problem. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Just briefly, I noticed item six, for example, we're transitioning from Ford to General Motors vehicles, and particularly on that one-ton Duramax diesel with the Allison transmission, which I can personally attest to, it's a great combination, and I hope you continue to transition to that because we should get some good longevity and utility out of them.
With the actual Chevrolets that we've been running, and we've seen that exact success, and that's why we would like to stick with it. Looking at the entire fleet, boy, we're down to maybe three or four Ford products, but it really helps our mechanics, it helps in training, it helps in our parts inventory, because they see the same thing day in and day out, which is, which is very good. And the product has been much more reliable for us, especially in plowing events, so we'd like to stick with it.
It's a great price on the Duramax as well, because it's a big upcharge.
And the transmission especially, when we're, when we're plowing uptown and we're going back and forth in reverse, those transmissions heat up. We had nothing but problems with the Fords, so we'd like to stick with the General Motors.
Any other questions or comments on the omnibus 13 items? If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
It would be with the amendment on the minute.
As amended.
As amended.
Ken, I'll second.
Roll call, hold please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. We have the first one being a consideration of an ordinance amending the city code pertaining to the ELOA Farms Commission. This is a first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Back in 2004, the city council passed an ordinance establishing the original ELOA Farms Commission. After a couple of years, the commission itself became inactive, members left, and it sort of sat dormant for a period of time. There has been, during that period of time, obviously, a lot of work that has gone on at ELOA Farms, as I think many of you saw firsthand when we had our strategic planning session out there last week. It is a spectacular facility. It's a spectacular site. One of the challenges that we have going forward, though, is to look at the revenues that are coming in to help support that site, and then also working with the ELOA Farm Foundation down the road when necessary capital improvement projects are going to be required, either to paint, fix a roof, or possibly even to make other enhancements to the facility. That will be something that we'll have to look at and, and try to come up with a long-term plan for how we can make sure that that facility remains sustainable without being a drain on taxpayer funding. The ordinance that is before you this evening for first reading consideration is very similar in many ways to the ordinance the council passed revising the court and commission. It is seven members. There is liaisons from the ELOA Foundation onto the ELOA Commission. The process here would be if the council approves first reading this evening, we would be soliciting recommendations of names to be on the first ELOA Farms Commission that we would bring to you at the September 17th meeting, when second reading was on the agenda. In the future, however, this too would fall under the auspices of the caucus to be looking for members to, to come forward, to vet those members, and to, in the future, be replacement members to the ELOA Farm Commission. So staff is recommending this evening that you approve first reading of the ordinance, and then I would encourage you or anyone at home who also has any suggestions on people who might be interested in serving on this. We've already actually received some names of people, very qualified people, to serve on this that are very interested in it, but we want to be as inclusive as possible. If there's somebody out there who has a passion for ELOA Farms, that they're given due consideration. These appointments will be appointments by the mayor with the concurrence of the city council, if they are to happen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have with respect to the proposed new ordinance.
Questions for Bob? No? Thank you, Bob.
Okay. We need a motion and a second, and a vote on first reading.
I'd like to make a motion. We recommend and grant first reading of an ordinance amending the city code relating to the ELOA Farm Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Voice vote, you're right.
Vic's just waking up.
Kick him over there.
Yeah, that's right. He hasn't been very active tonight.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is new business. Bob, anything new? Anyone new business?
No, I would just report that following the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we will be going into executive session for purposes of land disposition and pending litigation. There is not intended to be any action. It's for information only and updates.
Then I'll move to go into executive session.
Before we do that, I would just like to take an opportunity, I know there's an individual sitting in the back of the room there that's going to be leaving our employ shortly, and I just want to thank him for his services. Ramish, we're sorry to see you go. I understand that you're going to be moving close by to Highland Park. I don't know if this was part of the trade agreement that we got Elizabeth and we got Ramish back now, but we wish you well, and we thank you for all your, your service here to Lake Forest, and we know where to find you, so good luck with the new, with the new job.
Thank you.
So if we had a motion for Alderman, Novit, that would be brought into executive session for purposes of discussing land disposition and litigation, if we get a second.
Second. We need a roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panelliana is absent, sorry. Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Thank you, Bertie, the motion passes. If we need a, we're going to adjourn here formally, or we're going to go next door? Okay. Thank you.